If you're going to speak into the mic, it's definitely right there.
And if I had to guess, the deaf individuals would like to either see the video and the art of the mind stand defined?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And they have two minutes. They can let the cards go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we ask for, mention those talks in a minute, two minutes or three minutes? Because that's our, our, there should be a full year of open time, every time that that was heard, and so we should be able to and then our grades have to get inverted and see what is needed out.
Is there a grade?
So if you make that announcement, we'll find it so we have a plan.
Before we get started, if you have not had a chance to fill out a comment card, where our city clerk has comment cards this evening, we normally do not have public comments, but tonight we are going to be hearing public comments at the beginning from residents of Madison. So if you want to speak, we will only recognize you if you have filled out a comment card and identified the district or your address here in Madison. We also have the assistance of interpreters. If you are deaf and would like to come in this evening, please fill out a comment card and give that to the clerk's table. And we will make sure that you get that assistance if you need an interpreter. Good evening. It is Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and we will begin our work session at the city council. Mayor, do you want to start off?
I do. So part of the first, I guess I wanted to start with is thanking council for supporting us doing this. You know, this is one of the, in listening through the Civic Awareness Academy, one of the suggestions that came out of that is we kind of like to be a part of the budget process. Well, that's what you'd like these guys to do, but it sure made sense to, we want to give information to them to support a lot of times the budget process, which meant we needed to do something earlier, and in this case about just timing. The budget will go out in about two weeks to our department heads. That right, right, around a week, about a week? Yeah, two weeks, but okay, so that's right. So it'll go out in about two weeks to the department heads. They have three, four weeks to internally work to put their budget together. They get it back to finance, finance puts it all together and gives it to the mayor's office. The mayor's office then works with our department heads in different agencies, outside agencies, to then bring this, the finance committee, a piece. The finance committee has, they do the same thing, brings it to the full council to be approved. That process goes all the way through and our fiscal year starts October first. So first to council, thank you guys for supporting this. And again, Civic Awareness Academy, how can we help? But think again, tonight is, if we like this, we don't like this, we'd like to see more of this, we'd like to better understand this. So all of those things can be done for you guys. One thing I will say tonight, I know each person has signed up. We limited that to two minutes, not knowing the timeframe, because again, we're going into a work session on our capital improvement projects. So while it's only two minutes, one thing I wanted everybody here to know, and anybody who sees this, is in the mayor's office, we'll take all the information that you guys have. So a lot of times folks say, I wish I had more time, I wish you'd read this, I wish I could get more data. We'll take every bit of that. And also, just like today, we had somebody who came in who had made one of the thirty-minute appointments to meet with us. They are now working with Tracy on some volunteerism that may help our city in a big way. And so we'll be willing to meet with each one of you in more detail in the mayor's office for a thirty-minute slot, if that was something that you guys wanted to move forward. So with that said, I'll end by saying this. This council is, it's a part-time council, you know, whether they're full-time jobs or retired, these guys put in a ton of time. And so tonight, when we do this, you're listening. It only, nobody's looking to yell at anybody. This is such a positive thing to be able to get information from you guys and in turn be able to continue to work on the mission statement, which is to take what you give us in revenues and provide excellent services for your life. And that's what the goal is, so that's what we're hoping to do. And just now, back to you, to tell the other show.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I mentioned earlier, if you did not get a chance to fill out a comment card, you will need to fill out a comment card and state your address or the district where you live in Madison. Tonight, we're interested in hearing from Madison residents about our upcoming budget. We have different priorities and we want to make sure that we're hearing what your priorities are. And so the comments will be limited to the topic of our budget. And we are going to recognize you in the order that you turn in your cards. We heard in advance that there were some deficits and so you needed the assistance of an interpreter this evening. And so we are offering those services also. If you do need those services, please alert the clerk's table and Lisa will give you a card that you can fill out. And we will let you go and speak in the order that you have turned in your cards. We are going to begin with the public comment portion with Connie Chow.
As Connie comes up here, one thing I would want everybody here to know is all the folks in the city over in those chairs and in the back row are all department heads within the city. And again, that's part of what we want them to do is also be here to listen to you guys talk. I'm sorry, that's what I had.
Hi, I'm Connie Chow, District Six. In addition to being a resident here, I am the deputy director of the Huntsville Madison County Public Library. I would like to thank you for the city's generous support of the Madison Library. Your support has given us the ability to successfully serve and connect with the community. Madison Library is the busiest branch out of our ten branches in the county. In the past year, the branch has checked out almost eight hundred thousand items to meet our users and had two hundred and forty-five thousand visitors. This has been a five percent growth since the previous year. They have offered twelve hundred programs for twenty thousand seven hundred attendees. For families, the branch has early literacy programs and kindergarten readiness, storytimes, book clubs, scene programs, classes on using their maker's space studio and programs on how to garden. Their most popular program for Sherman this year had three hundred and fifty participants. The library serves as a partner to the school system by supplementing the learning that happens during the school year and continues through the summer with our summer reading program. In addition, we had almost five thousand room reservations in our study rooms and auditorium spaces. These impressive numbers are evidence of how this library is an important part of the city's infrastructure. Though we are still finalizing our next fiscal year budget, at a minimum, the library will be requesting for an increase of twenty-seven thousand five hundred from the City of Madison to support library operations. This will be the increase for this upcoming year. I ask that you continue your support of the library budget along with the necessary increase to cover the growth in the services and population we serve. I also brought handouts, not able to give those to somebody to share the data with you.
Absolutely, and Lisa, please open your mic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person is Katie Moore.
I'm Katie Moore, I'm District Four. I'm also the manager of the Madison Public Library. As the manager of the library, I spend a lot of time watching what is happening around the library. Here are some things that I've recently observed. Moms socializing while their kids play after attending storytime. Tweens celebrating successfully solving an escape room puzzle. An elderly gentleman getting help with using a computer from staff. Musicians performing for Make Music Day. Clients from the Ark of Madison County working on a project in the maker's space. Adults playing chess, mahjong and bridge. Tutors working with students. An exhibit by a local artist. High schoolers working on their advanced placement class summer assignments. Kids learning about the importance of bees and other pollinators in a gardening program. A young couple getting their marriage certificate notedized. A local author giving a presentation about her successful first novel. A nonprofit group having a meeting. And of course, books, people browsing, reading and checking them out. All of these things were made possible by your financial support, which we truly appreciate. Please continue to help us provide this amazing resource for the entire community by maintaining the library's funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Margie Daly.
Margie Daly, District Six, Karen's district. Okay, so I just wrote down some things that I went to see, added into the city. I think we need some traffic lights upgraded. And like the one on Eastview, they added some contraption that when I ride my bike, I have to press it, but it doesn't go with the arrow, so it really is useless. Because if the people with the arrow think they can drive across and you're walking, the walk sign comes, or you go over a bike, you're gonna get hit. So I'm really, I would like to see the traffic lights on use updated to real traffic lights with the walk signs that you can press the button and the arrow is coordinated with the walk sign instead of what we have currently. Then I'd like a more walkable city. I'd like to see more sidewalks, and we've been promised these sidewalks for at least the last two councils and we haven't gotten them. I'd like to see like a north, south-north route and a east-west route where you could have a sidewalk to ride to County Line if you want to ride your bike or people walk. And people are doing it because I go out on my bike and I see a lot more activity walking. Okay, I'm getting a little bit. I'd also like to see some bike racks at Dublin Park, at City Hall, maybe even just one or two of those little hook things so that people that are all riding their bikes and maybe get those rent-a-bikes, the electric rent-a-bikes. It could actually be some payables for us. Possibly, I don't know how that works, but they are a private company and Huntsville has them. Okay, that's about all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Jocelyn Grover.
Good evening, thank you for being here tonight. You've heard this before from me, but I'm gonna keep up here, this is the mom and me. We have a dangerous area off Hardiman Road for our children and our pedestrians. We have no sidewalks, we have deep ditches. I have met with our city engineer, he's saying, well, we can't put in sidewalks because of the ditches. Well, we can put in, you know, we can put in pipes, we can put in sidewalks and grass over that. We have a Daisy Lane gift, we have a Dairy Queen. Both of those are businesses that people would walk to and access from Hardiman Road if they could. I've also had traffic accidents coming out of Dairy Queen. There are not turn lanes coming into subdivisions or into those businesses. There is a turn lane from Hardiman going to County Line Road. However, it is not long enough. It is backing up way past my subdivision in Taylor's Crossing. I've also lived in Hardiman. You are going to be putting in a light at Hardiman and Burgreen. That will help, but we have lots of teenagers that are over in Hardiman Place and Taylor's Crossing. They even access from Ashbury. It breaks my heart when I see kids running across that street. I see them trying to ride their bicycles. I even have a neighbor who goes and picks up trash, he's elderly. I see him trying to navigate those ditches. I mean, it is just an accident waiting to happen. And we have a large subdivision, as you know, going in with our, with a new roundabout, that's good. The light is good, we've got to have a way to get across the street. Flashing lights, I was just in Florida, they do those with pedestrian crossings.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next is Janetta Wilson.
Good evening, I'm Janetta Wilson, a longtime Friends of the Library member. And I've been the vice president for six years, and the last three years I'm the treasurer and run the used bookstore in the Madison City Library. There've been a lot of changes in the library over the past ten years. When I started with Friends of the Library, nearly all the funding for the extra programs was provided by the Friends through our fundraising. I applaud that the new library that was built six years ago, after that happened, the Library Foundation and you guys increased funding to take advantage of the new expanded program that we could do because of the new facilities. Katie came in a few weeks ago, and Katie and Connie just gave you statistics about the circulation and services that demonstrated the outstanding use of the funding and that the Madison City Library is a crown jewel in the system. I want to personalize those systems statistics a little bit like Katie did. And I thought I would borrow from the Eric Carr book, Brown Bear, Brown Bear, what do you see? Because I see, I'm in there almost every day as a volunteer, and so I see a lot of things. I see the child that believes that they can build three D printed modules on the moon after they've printed a beautiful blue dinosaur. The child or adult that dreams of writing their own book. Hearing someone that not much different from themselves that has achieved that dream through the special programs that they have. A person needing an emergency notarization on a Sunday when everyone else in the area is closed. The senior citizen who lives along getting much-needed human interaction with staff and other patrons they see on the regular visits. I have people that come in, talk to me every single day. Just, it's kind of sad, really. But the dozens of families that lowered their food bill this summer by growing their own garden through the tutorials that were provided and the seed packets that were provided through the library. The teen who finds a safe space to play games and make friends with interests like theirs. The wannabe crafters who learn to soak, quilt or use a cricket from the maker's space classes. The less fortunate citizens who get a break from the heat and the cold by coming in and sitting in the climate-controlled, in the nice comfy chairs. The child that learns about wind tunnels in the kids' play area. Discover a lot of music on the outdoors idol phone, learns to play chess.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, I appreciate it. For those of you who are coming in late, if you would like to comment this evening during budget comments, we would like you to fill out a comment card. You're interested in hearing from Madison residents, the clerk's table. And at the back of the room, we have comment cards, and so we would like you to fill those out. We will stop taking comments once the comment cards are done. Next, we have Dan and Michelle Gentle. I don't know if both of you want to speak?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, so you'll each get two, or do you?
No, no.
Okay.
Just to keep it real brief, Dan, though, I'm with District Four, Hardiman Place, Mayor. She mentioned the sidewalks, but my concern was more towards the streets. I've seen a lot of growth, I've seen a lot of improvement in Madison. However, when we improve, when we make new things, sometimes we forget about the older things, the things like the neighborhood streets. We're seeing lots of streets that are going in disrepair where there's large pits in the road or large patches that never get, come back and touched up. I know down along Madison Boulevard, there's a lot of businesses that are down there that have like gaping holes in some of those side streets, things like that. I would like to see a little bit more of that taken care of. So while we make budget for new stuff, I would like to see some of the older stuff taken care of in that way. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitzi Adams.
Mayor, I'd like to add another use for the library. I really enjoy taking my dog for a walk around outside. And unfortunately, I can't do that right now because it's too hot, which brings me to my point. I'd really like to know what kind of revisions there are in the budget, or will there be, for planning for climate resiliency. And I'd just like to point out, I went to Publix this afternoon. I went in, it was about three o'clock or so. When I came back to my car, the thermometer in my car registered a hundred and nine degrees. And that's due to something called the urban heat island effect. That was, the research was actually pioneered by a Marshall Space Flight Center scientist years ago studying Atlanta and how heat in the cities is much worse than in suburban areas where there are green spaces and lots of trees and less asphalt. So I would like to see plans for climate resiliency that could take the form of green or energy, forest, concrete and asphalt, and a lot more green space. And I'd like the city to be a lot more walkable and bikeable. And that's it?
Thank you.
More trees?
More trees, got it. Okay, next is David Herrenberger.
I'd say first that Madison is a great place to live. Next month will be our twentieth year here. We selected Madison when we moved here with the Army, and we made a good choice. So we're still here, we didn't plan on being here, but we're still here. Our library is great. I urge you to continue to support it. And it really doesn't need any external sensors. They do a good job of keeping things under control there themselves. Parents can do that on their own. Our schools are great and our citizens are great, which is what makes Madison a really good place to be. But we can be better, specifically, I totally agree with the last speaker. It needs to be more walkable and more bikeable. Our neighborhoods are sort of isolated, especially for our kids after school or whatever. They can't go from a neighborhood that's right next to each other without crossing a big street. They should be more interconnected. And last, I just want to say thanks to everybody because I know there's a lot of work that's done behind the scenes. And they don't, the people don't get much credit, you all get credit because you're sitting up here. But the people sitting down here and around the sides of the room, around the perimeter don't get a lot of credit. A lot, they get a lot of grief a lot of time, but they don't get much pro-credit. So I just say that part of what makes Madison a great place is the workers that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrenberger. Next is Ben Hollingsworth.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to say, I am not a resident of the City of Madison, but I am a resident of the county. And I want to compliment you all on setting up the topic on tonight's agenda of tax exemption for hearing aid purchases. And I want to encourage you to seriously consider allowing that budget item pass. Because you are, to my understanding, the first municipality to consider that topic on your budget. I was thrilled to see that, and I know that that will have a significant impact on your community and your citizens. There are so many people in North Alabama who have come here to the City of Madison for hearing aid services. There are three large audiological businesses here in the City of Madison that are providing hearing aids. And I don't want to bore you with the details, I don't know if you're aware of all of that, but it is a significant cost to people when they purchase hearing aids. I have worked for the State of Alabama with clients with hearing loss for a very long time. And my goal is to help people, to help them, when they've experienced hearing loss, get back to their loss. And some of the time, you know, they're required to pay eighty percent of the cost of a hearing aid. And please, consider passing that tax exemption, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And I think the interpreters had mentioned, were there others who were coming that needed, or did you know of anyone else? Just the two of us? Just, okay. Okay, thank you. And those are all the comment cards from Madison residents that have been turned in? I just want to make sure everyone's got a chance to fill out if you live in Madison and you want to comment on the budget. We would welcome you to fill out a card. All right, then I think we're going to close the public comment portion of the budget priorities and move to the Civic Awareness List.
You want to take, uh, Chris, you just want to move on?
Are you all ready to move on?
Yeah, they're going. All right. All right, so we're ready to move on, keep going, Chris. And I think in this case, first thing we want to do is Michael is online. They are at a conference out in, I think, Salt Lake City. But he is able to, I think you guys have handouts, and Michael also has it ready to be seen on the screen. So Michael, I'm gonna hand it off to you and let you drive for a while, and then we'll bring the next group in.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, so I have the, I have a PowerPoint presentation for the Fund Thirty-Eight Project update, please, Karen Corbett. Is that available to me, please?
Yeah, we got it drawn up now.
Okay, so these are just the fund projects to begin with. So if you go to the second slide, you can see the first four projects there. That should coincide with the Fund Thirty-Eight progress document that you guys might be looking at as well. So pump house for spread storm heights, project twenty-one zero twenty-four. Those pipes have been purchased, they've been procured and delivered. They'll be installed with the N V project going on over there as part of their contract, and we'll reimburse them for that when those get installed. I'm not exactly sure what their schedule is for that, although they're working on the transmission line over there. The next one there is project twenty-two, oh one six Hughes Road and Porton Mill Signal. That one's at about ninety-eight percent, we're gonna do some final utility coordination and we'll be ready to get that one bid and then construct it hopefully next year. For next fiscal year. Then next is project twenty-two zero two-two, Madison Boulevard Resurfacing. That is scheduled to let on Friday with Alvin. Basically, they'll prep the bid process for that, and if everything goes well for that, we should be able to start that resurfacing project this fall. Then project twenty-two zero two-four is the mill red ditch improvement, we just awarded the bid on that. This past Monday, we'll have council meeting, it came in a little bit under budget. So that's going very well too, hopefully we turn on that pretty soon. All right, Chris, you want to go to the next slide?
You got it.
Okay. All right, next is project twenty-two zero three-six, that's Huntsville Brown's Ferry Burgreen Roundabout. That bid was awarded a couple of weeks ago, came in a little bit under budget as well. Right now, we're coordinating relocation of the overhead power. Once that gets done, we can start the other utility relocation and then just general contracting crew out there to do the pipe work. Project twenty-two zero four zero is a Walter and Lutze intersection improvement. Construction is scheduled to begin on that one in July. Chris should be out there working on the road control this week. And after the holiday, we expect, we think, they should be getting started on this pipe work for that one. That was also, I had some coordination with the N V project. Next is project twenty-three here zero eight, that's the Royal Drive Signal. That's another one, plans are at ninety-eight percent, we're gonna wait and finally feel the coordination on that one. And then we'll probably start construction on that one when we get a little further along on the actual road extension into that location. And then the last Fund Thirty-Eight project is project ninety-nine zero zero seven, Hardiman Madison Bridge Boulevard Roundabout. That project, the construction's complete on that. We're waiting on the developer over there to submit the final awards for reimbursement on that one, and then we'll get into acceptance of that project. Does the council or mayor have any questions about it, do this?
Michael, the Royal Drive Signal, what is the intersecting road for that one?
That, sorry, that one's at County Line Road where Royal Drive will be fitted to. This is the plan to get the, this is the plan to design the new signal there. And we're not quite all the way through the design for the road extensions. So we'll wait on construction to figure out once we get further along on that one.
Okay, just was wondering which end of the road is off.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is the county, county part of that.
Council, anything else on those projects that Michael asked? Really, you know, two of those projects, just so everybody did hear correctly, came in under the budget amount. Huntsville Brown's Ferry and the ditch, so that's good news, we appreciate that. Michael, we have the other, are you going to go through the other piece, or what else you want to go for? Michael, we have the other, are you going to go through the other, uh, piece, or what, what, what else you want to go forward with?
All right, we could, we think I want to the three-year plan if you, if you guys, uh, go ahead and do that now.
At, at least get that at the high level. This is your overall, this, this, Chris, is this sheet? Yeah, you got it, Mark? Oh, all right. So you want to go through the capital improvement one right now?
Yeah, if you want to get to the three-year plan, we can have a wish to the, of the front line.
All right, go ahead.
Um, okay, so looking at the three-year plan, uh, we've got it working down into the construction and design for FY twenty-twenty-five, uh, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Prioritizing those construction projects. Uh, the first two there are based on a new school to be constructed out there by the, by the school board. Uh, the Burgery and Hardeman, uh, new signal, uh, and the seagulls may still widening. Those projects are to serve that school. And then, um, another, another big project is the Old Madison High, Hughes Turn Lane. Uh, just trying to realign those, uh, opposing traffic lanes, uh, going across Hughes Road there. Uh, we've also got a roundabout, we're looking to construct the Bolsh and Gooch to improve, uh, safety up there by the hospital. And then, uh, some improvement to the Waltrana and Gooch, uh, signal inside the wall.
Okay, the time wise?
The time wise, we're looking at, um, doing some improvement in the Powell and Burgery intersection. That's another one that was identified, that we're, uh, doing a traffic study of new school. Um, looking at possibly doing a, a five-lane widening for Hughes Road from ECU up to the Lstee. Trying to get that next section of Hughes Road widened. Uh, next is intersection improvement at Brown Sperry Road and Sullivan. Possibly a turn lane, uh, turn lane there. That's been identified before in previous traffic studies. Also looking at, uh, similar improvements at Bolsh and Mill. Uh, do some, do something there through a signal or, or something like that at Bolsh and Mill to help, uh, with traffic, uh, in that location, helping carry traffic.
I'm sorry, Michael. Michael, for Bolsh and Mill, are you looking, when you say signal, are you saying, you're saying traffic light or a roundabout or something like that that will help traffic flow?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So we're looking at Bolsh and Mill. We're also looking at a future roundabout at Bolsh and Brown Sperry, and those two together. Uh, you know, the, the roundabout will help try to get through the Brown Sperry part of that. Uh, but then we're also going to do something probably at Mill and Bolsh. That'll probably be a signal, there's not a lot of space over there for a roundabout. Uh, but once we get to the point where we get a consultant on board, we might have them do a, a high-level evaluation just to see what works out there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Excuse me. Uh, and then the final one for design for FY twenty-twenty-five would be, uh, some improvement at the Sullivan and Mill intersection, possibly turn lane, uh, turn lane or multiple turn lanes in that location.
Okay, and then you might just take him out through FY twenty-six if you would. And again, part of the whole, the whole game plan is, you know, in each respective year, you, you define it, then you design it, then you construct it.
Yep.
The, the projects that we understand in the last couple of weeks have followed the same process.
That, that's right. We're try, we're trying to, we're trying to make a path here towards a lot of the projects that we've already got designed for. Uh, Bolsh and Brown Sperry Road, we should be getting pretty close to the end of the design on that one this year. Uh, starting to get it constructed, uh, FY twenty-twenty-six.
Is there any way, Michael, I'm sorry, um, I'm just really concerned about that intersection. I see post-calls almost every day with people trying to turn left from Brown Sperry, uh, heading back south towards Mill. Is there, and I think that design is like close to a hundred percent right now. Is there any way at all, please, that we can look at getting this into twenty-twenty-five? There have been so many accidents, and I would love for Chief Dandy to maybe give us a report on accidents at Bolsh and Gooch versus accidents at Bolsh and Brown Sperry. It seems to me personally, Bolsh and Brown Sperry is a little bit more dangerous intersection. Then the, the one stop on Bolsh that ended, um, that ended into Bolsh from Gooch.
I disagree with that assessment, but I'll listen to what, what Chief Dandy gets to say.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the stats. I will say that's a four-way stop on a wide intersection. I, I mean, not the.
Neither are four-way stop. I mean, neither one of them are four-way.
Well, that's not four-way, but it is a.
It's a three-way.
A one-way stop at Gooch.
Well, yeah, one-way stop, but it's a three-way intersection.
You don't, do you even have the stats with you right now? Okay, let's.
Okay, I, I do, I do have accident stats from one twenty-two through present. Neither one of those two intersections that you guys have are in the top ten that I asked for, just to know. Number one is Waltrana and Highway seventy-two. Number two is Waltrana and Madison Boulevard, so you can just go both sides of that. And the only other one is truly significant is Hughes and seventy-two. Everything else is within, you know, what you think, Brown Sperry, Hughes, Waltrana and Lstee. And Michael's got a couple of those on the plan right there, so.
I think that both of, I think both of those are pretty similar. Um, we're a little bit further along with the design for the Bolsh and Gooch one. Uh, a little bit further along on the ramp on the right-of-way acquisition. Uh, and there's, and there's no flood concern at all with that one. There's a little bit of flood that we're having to work through on the, on the Brown Sperry one. So that's, that's why that one kind of got priority as well.
Thank you.
You know, if it, if it's something that we can get it done, that we want to get it in mid-year, uh, for twenty-twenty-five, I think we could do that. Um, but, but for now, we're, we're still not ready to build the Brown Sperry one yet.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Um, back to looking at the construction project for FY twenty-six. Uh, those Palmer Road bridges are some of the oldest ones in the city. Uh, we're, we're getting close to a design, uh, on those, but they're not going to be, that's not ready. That's kind of going to be kind of a bigger project. So we'll put that one off for twenty-twenty-six. Hudson Brown Sperry widening, that's a three-lane widening to get a better turn lane. That would go from the bridge just east of Holiday back toward Fallowood. That will serve some of those subdivisions over there. But we're still waiting on the developer to be a little bit further along in their construction in that area, particularly for the north-north side. Um, and then lastly, that building sidewalk project that, uh, we started looking at on, on Monday, trying to get the, that we, that she got passed the design. To, to complete the design for that project.
Okay. And then the, I think you said the road sidewalks, that's already been approved to start the engineering side of that. How long do you think? Okay, yeah, how long do you think it's going to take for, for that to be finalized?
The design for the Mill Red sidewalk, first phase?
Yeah.
For this junction? Uh, that, that'll probably take them a few months. Um, there's some walls to design for that, some short walls, and then they're going to figure out some utilities. It'll probably be, it'll probably be late when it, um, this coming year, early, early twenty-fourth.
Okay. All right, and then I know Council also has, she has all the different projects that they had, and ones that are ongoing right now, and.
Yeah, so those are current projects.
Yeah, current projects. And so you guys can kind of look at that, gives you an idea of complete and, you know, where they stand on it.
That's right.
Any questions for Michael?
That first block is, in, sorry, that first block is the internal design project. Those are all a bit hard enough, uh, in-house design and working with public work to complete. Most of those are getting the work to done.
I, I am going to.
Excuse me.
I, I was just going to say, I am, I am going to throw something out. Are you able to see the screen? Because I've asked Chris to put up, um, since a couple of people have mentioned opportunities for walkability. We have a greenway plan that, that's in the schedule somewhere. Yes, please. And I was just going to ask you, and it's mainly, I just texted Chris to ask if you could put it up. Because I think that this particular area, um, if you see the pink in the middle, and I don't know if you can make that a little bit bigger, maybe, Chris?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to.
No, you're not. Well, it's the Mill Creek Greenway access, which goes from Waltrana to Brown Sperry that connects to, um, Bradford Creek. If we were able to finish that, we would be able to go from Slaughter, well, for sure Hughes Road to County Line Road. So if, if you all can see that pretty clearly, um, the pink in the, in the upper right part is, uh, Waltrana, right there in the Bridgefield subdivision. It goes through Bridgefield to the north there, Park Meadow to the south, picks up between Oakstone to the south and Foxfield to the north. And it ends where we finished our most recent hundred feet or so, which goes between Oakstone and Foxfield. If we were to finish that mile, people could ride their bike or walk, literally. Because the southern portion of that, where it ends there at Brown Sperry, you can go underneath the bridge on Bolsh, hit Bradford Creek Greenway. And I mean, really, the sky's the limit. So I'm just putting that out there because people have asked about low-walkability. And that, that to me would be the final piece of a puzzle in the heart of Madison to finish. So just want to have that on your radar for, um, whatever year plan you have. We've talked about it, Michael, but, um, just wanted to show this in a public forum, to show people that we are looking at walkability biking throughout the city. And how that would really be the final piece of tying, um, to Bradford Creek, getting all the way to Palmer, getting up to Liberty Little School, Harriet Elementary School. So just want to throw that out there as probably the final piece of the greenway puzzle.
All right, can you forward this to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I did have one question, why am I come? It's kind of a broad question, but I see that we did a lot of internal, but we have way more external designs. And I've seen the cost of these external. Would it be better for the city to hire more design people so we could have more in-house things instead of everything being out of house like this? Is it, is it cost-effective or not?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We're, we're working on that right now. We just hired a new PD back in January, and he's allowing us to do a lot more in-house design. These external projects that you can see right here, these were done, these were done and started, uh, years ago, but, but, maybe they're before I even arrived. Uh, but, yes, ma'am, for those of you who are trying to do as many in-house projects as you can.
Okay, I just didn't know if you needed an increase, more people in the office to do that, whether we need to help you there, or it was just a matter of finding people to do it.
Yes, I'll definitely take more of it. But, but that is something that we're, we're, we're able to do, we'll do that.
Well, is it more efficient, money-bonies, if you're doing it in-house as opposed to always going to the external?
Um, that's sort of a complicated answer. In, in any case, it's yes, it's more, it's more efficient for us to do, uh, in-house design projects, uh, particularly for, for partnering with public work to do the construction. Uh, on the other hand, if we are contracting out the construction of the project, it's a little bit more efficient to have an outside consultant, uh, handle the design. Uh, because they're very important, and it's more of these guys also on the coordination and, uh, on, uh, construction base. This is something that we're working on, and we, and we do want to do is we can add projects that we possibly can.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Good number.
Anything else? All right, Michael, I think we're okay right now. Cory, if you, go ahead, as we kind of continue to go through the project, uh, performance report for Fund Thirty-Eight, uh, just go through the bigger projects and give you guys an update on, on what's happening right now. So, I guess you guys can find Cory, so I guess the private earner page right there. Good evening. Okay, Slaughter, no, Slaughter.
Can you man, can you point it up to that?
You tilt your head to the left.
Stand on one foot there now.
Uh, Fund Thirty-Eight, Paul Hartsman, uh, Town Madison, which is the former Hexagon property. Uh, pickleball courts, uh, were completed in, uh, February. Um, completed twelve courts. I was out there yesterday in a hundred-degree heat, and six of those are being used during the day. Um, created some parking issues for us over there by the demand, uh, for those courts. Um, the athletic field portion of the project, the two softball fields and the two multi-use fields have been completed. Um, we have a sand volleyball court under design right now for that property. That is not funded in Fund Thirty-Eight, but I, I mentioned it while we were talking about that facility. Um, at the time, when we did the, uh, budget for sand volleyball, we didn't know where it was going. And found that that, uh, facility would be a budget option, uh, for that project. Uh, next one, Sunshine Oaks, the disc golf course is completed. Um, playground has been completed as of last week. Um, was out there Sunday morning. It's getting a heavy amount of use, which we can, we can use since, since keep them open and it's created traffic issues at that one and those kind of things. So it's kind of slowed the use of that, plus the hundred-degree heat. Um, pavilions, the two pavilions that are under construction right now should be completed this week. And public works is working on the, uh, parking and access roads.
Before you go, we need to the next slide. I have a question about the pavilions.
Okay.
I was at, um, the Tarkog Angel Picnic slash Board Meeting yesterday in Jimmy Gill Park in Athens. And they have a very nice pavilion. And, um, we were covered the whole day, but it was miserable out there. Are there fans? Are anything to help with the air being considered?
Not in, in those. We can maybe retrofit those, they do have power to them. So that's something I can look at. Um, it'd have to be, uh, something that couldn't be vandalized.
That, that was my second question. And how would you do that without?
I'll, I'll look into that and get back to you. Um, that, that could be a possibility. Um, we're definitely providing mining and power so you can log in crop pods and that and stuff. Um, but I'll, I'll look into the fan as well.
Okay, thank you.
The Madison Community Center, um, project building's under construction. Um, looking at, uh, date of, uh, October for the opening for that. Um, public works is building a parking lot across the street. And we're also working on a, a connection to the Bradford Creek Greenway so people can access the, the community center through the, uh, property across the street. Be happy to answer any other questions.
And I'll throw out there, when, go, when we talk about the October first, opening first, from a budgetary standpoint, we're all, uh, we got, we got some budget that shows that we're ready to move forward with that, fully functioning, using senior center plus additional funds. Um, make sure we get the right staffing. The other part is we have to make the actual move. So it's on, uh, pretty much on, on time right now. Right now, I'd say August is, is the time where we say it's done. We're going to get ourselves time to get in there and look at what we're going to be ready for a three-year plan. So that's why we're using that date. We could get it earlier, but kind of looking for a ready opening right now.
Correct, there's, there's a lot to move and, and a lot of equipment that needs to be transferred and staffed and trained and, and set in place. We're, we're in the process of hiring those right now.
Cory, could you email us that PowerPoint, please? Thank you.
I did have a question. How about the, uh, Spots, and what is that bidding?
Um, we don't have any plans for it at this time. I've got.
Done your wish, sorry, wishes.
Yeah, I've got a, a, a cost on what it'd take to, to build one, um, depending on where we put it. But I don't have a, a location that is one of Spots.
Because I understand there's quite a demand for it. Lots of parents are like, when is it coming, when is it coming, and.
I was thinking it was also going to be maybe an MVP project, a raising money. Was that discussed at that time?
Absolutely, it was discussed, but I think one of the things with MVP, you want to try to finish everything in the camp community center. And no sense in bringing on another project to finish this one. And then, again, we could, Cory, time to figure out staffing-wise and placement-wise, where the best place to put this. Yeah, that's a great project for them to take on once we kind of finish that part.
Sure.
So really jumping to the line, just so we don't.
I'd say in the next, the next few years.
Next few years.
And we're, we're looking at different options. My, my big issue is flash bands and sanitizing the water. Um, you know, a lot of those have problems with water tests. And we ended up on the news stations when they go to test the water, um, because the water's not fluorinated. My only demand is whether we make one, we have closed system that we can put chlorine and, and sanitize in the water. So, um, we're looking at where that would best fit. You know, where existing plumbing is, going to impact the cost of that project and those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's Cory. And Gerald, we've got a couple of things on, on, in your work going on too.
Chris, you pull up the public safety building.
You got it.
So we're currently, uh, the, the structural plans are out for bid. The bids are due in July. Bids are due in July the eleventh. Uh, we had extended a, a couple of weeks, uh, because of, of that building bidders. So, we gained the initial bidder by extending two weeks, uh, there. The demo was being completed inside the building, so we're just waiting on pricing to come back. Uh, we think that we can be in office-wise of that in the January first, February, and then the fire station portion of that by the end of twenty twenty-five. Any questions about that bill?
Do we have an approximate cost for that?
We, we even budgeted five point three.
Uh, well, public safety right now, four point seven, four point seven. Yeah. What we did on the public safety there is we combined the fire station and this building together to be able to accomplish. Two good ones in this one is now Hexagon Public Safety.
I'd love to like to thank you on these, uh, U Animal Control Building. So, there's rendition of what it looks like. We're ninety percent complete on construction drawings. They're due by the end of the week to be a hundred percent. So, once we have funding available, uh, to build that, we'll put it out for bid.
Would you be able to send me that presentation? I would look to again, and that, that was my main question tonight. So, uh, it's in the budget for this next year. I wasn't sure if it was contingent on selling that and selling the street project.
It's not in the budget, just move forward to get that. So, the part we've always talked about is this allows him to then get an understanding of what you think it's going to cost, and we then can bring it back to you guys. At the same time, that property is for sale right now.
Right.
And if so, you would have, it's a council decision on how you would fund that. But this is at least giving you an opportunity. The other part of it is the training facility that will also go here. You're not going to really be showing how yet tonight. You know, fires, fires we can't.
We, we have those slides.
Okay, so let's, let's tie that in with the two, Gerald, for good.
Slides, the overall layout, Chris. The other one. There. So, the, uh, our department, police department, training facility, uh, that there won't be located there. That property would go in the center, as it's shown in the dark where square. And then, we're trying to figure out how much concrete that we need to round and park the apparatus on to support that, do that, so. Chief Andy's got a, uh, price of just under seven hundred thousand dollars for the structure. And then, we would have to come in, add another fire hydrant, do some grading, put some drainage in, and put some concrete, be able, able to support the trucks while they're there.
So, just going back to right now, in this, in, in your Fund Thirty-Eight, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting there. And our state legislators, along with using our, our lobby, our Spartac folks, helped secure five hundred thousand dollars directly for the support of this. So, the overall project has about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And just that building alone is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus, some of the other stuff that's got to be done. So, we've got to bring in overall plan to tie all this together, you know? I say a phase approach, this, keep close to funding, so we just got to look at that first.
Okay, so, so I'm confused. So, is that, that Celtic, right? Because it's not really showing the street, and I'm terrible with geography. I found my way here, and that's about it. But, I'm, what, what, Cel- Celtic at the northern part?
So, okay, so you mean on the left-hand, the white building on the left-hand side? Like, says Madison Fire Station?
Yes, yes. Oh, okay, turn that way, okay, got you. So, Celtic is to the left?
More to the top.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and where the car that is above where the fire station is.
Right, and that's where the animal control. And so, my question is, is the animal control building in the budget for next?
No, not yet.
That's kind of a problem, right? Because the design is about done.
It sounds like it can.
Okay.
It's just not, it's part of all of the, bringing you guys a lot of years, all of the different stages of where we are, and, you know, just like any projects that are on the capital improvement, this is what Michael thinks, but it's your own decision as far as what actually goes in there. So, we can bring you that, so.
Okay, thank you.
This is not a given.
My birthday's coming, it's August, that'd be great.
Which, which of the three projects that you brought up so far would you want?
All of them.
I'm just asking.
Okay, so the animal control started, and the ratting out, what was it? Oh, and the green one, I'll have to get back to you.
More importantly, which three are you going to cut out?
But that's, all right.
All right, keep going, Gerald.
Sorry, Gerald.
But that's, that's where I've got, any questions about any of those?
What was the timeline on opening that park, Jane Park? And after, everything gets moved down?
So, delivery is eight to ten months on the structure. So, if we put in, you know, we've, we've got enough money to go ahead and, and order the structure. We've got fun, what else goes around it, do that in, in our twenty twenty-five budget. But if, if we're able to go ahead and order the structure, we could have it by February, March, have it installed.
Yeah, I think you guys all know, but, uh, here, this is police and fire as well. So, both can use this for training, you know, in Madison on duty, we need this, because we're right now, we have, we're traveling other places to get this done. And so, we appreciate that, and that's, and then, we're, you know, part of it again, trying to sell the pri- property and then give you guys, okay, here's all your different options, where the money can go. We're never going to have the money that we need for everything, so we just keep working on a system, you know, approachable to follow.
Right.
That's what we're doing. Yeah.
I, I think, uh, regionally, do we know how much of an impact this kind of training facility would have with the county, federal, and every hospital in the city as well? Have there been any kind of discussions on that, I'm understanding, is there an impact there that's?
Yes, we, the county's also buying it, uh, and, and well, they're purchasing, you know, that we'll be building a different tower, a different training facility at their facility in, um, in the county, the current fire training facility in the county. It's pretty distant for us, it really is not useful for us to, to use without having to hire a bunch of overtime. This, basically, it's the same as going to Decatur, which is what we do right now for us. So, um, there, there is an opportunity, obviously, for both police and fire to come, uh, and utilize our facility, and, you know, we could, we could, uh, realize some funds from that at, at some point in time, but, uh, right now, our, our big focus is our folks, both, both police and fire, this will allow us to, to be able to do things on duty routinely, and actually practice the stuff that we have on all of our plans, and right now, we're getting practice. But there could be a potential, I know I talked to Chief Andy as well, that there could be a potential for use for this. And you, if you combine, uh, Twenty Three A, the Hexagon Building, we're, we're, part of that is, you notice, is a large, uh, training, training room, and we do intend on bringing in regional classes, both police and fire for that. I would, I, Chief Andy added that.
Exactly, so, again, this is something that we both need, and we figure a less of a burden on taxpayers in the city, and we entered it jointly like this, so that's what we designed it to be that way. But, so, as you know, we're boxed in pretty much in Madison. We're not growing out anymore per se, but we're growing up. And what we need in that training facility at, at Celtic is to, to now practice vertical police and firefighting and things like that, that we don't currently have. We have to go to different places whenever they have a schedule open, and with all of our guys working different shifts, we have no way of rotating everybody through there. It's only a little group at a time gets to do that, not on a consistent basis.
Right now, we're at the mercy of other people's schedules. Sure, sure, we have a hard time between, we are able to get some steak props to come in, and, and use them, but they're at mercy to everybody else, and it really hampers us. Plus, with the addition of the training, uh, roofs, that we're talking about in Twenty Three A, uh, many, many programs have a, uh, academic piece to it. If you see down at the bottom left of that, have an academic piece to it, and then also a practical piece to it. So, we'll be able to do both, uh, you know, just right, right down the road from each other.
Yeah, no, that's correct. I, my, the real genesis of the question was with the, the regional, uh, cooperation that we have here and all the different entities, was is there an opportunity to, uh, potentially partner there together? And, and I, I didn't know if those discussions had been had. I know the FBI's bringing out a lot of stuff here, um, and serving with the county that we have already, and then with the fire, and I know with, you know, Arsenal, different entities. You know, were, were there opportunities there, so? That was the genesis.
There are, there are, and we'll be looking, especially once we get it, and we can, our marketing get better for those opportunities. Right now, we, we take advantage of those and, and work closely together, uh, with the, uh, on Red Zone at the Arsenal, and we're actively involved in the, um, full-scale exercises coming up in August with them, and we will be participating there. You know, and we kind of do that, right now, we have to hire overtime to go, to go elsewhere.
I got a quick question for you guys, if you could. So, I know we spent our money on the, the building itself. How's that affect our training budget? I mean, I know, you know, both guys spent a lot of their money in training budget, wanting bigger pieces. Does this help that, or will it completely?
Obviously, because nobody likes to send people elsewhere to do it than here.
We're, we're already making more plans to do in-house, uh, full, full, uh, programs, helping our college programs. We can do it, we have the talent, we just don't have the resources. So, we just, this can help us a lot, not have to have travel costs.
An opportunity by other entities to come and participate.
So, another thing that's in the works right now is, um, my first year here, we brought in a group out of Boston called Strategies for Youth, and they did a course called Teaching the Police, you know? Policing the Teen Brain, I think, I can get it outright. Um, and it teaches our officers, because we have such a, a huge juvenile age population, how to specifically deal with those issues that involve juveniles that aren't necessarily criminal justice problems, but are still problems that we need to address, and also addresses juvenile mental health issues. I was recently contacted by Lisa Theroe, who's the director of this center, uh, because we did a training trainer, so we have our own trainers here, and was really impressed with the, the training that we did and the enthusiasm of our, of our officers. So, we're now in consideration, we in Madison are in consideration for being the southeastern state's training hub for police and the teen brain. Should that happen, we're definitely going to need that, that big training from there.
I have one more question for you. Is there a SWAT vehicle in the budget? I had a constituent ask me about that as well. We don't really have a, a SWAT vehicle per se, we have a fourth.
Well, so, so, when we say that, when they have one catalog to us, yeah. So, when they bring the catalog, it's expected to see something like that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, we talked about the fact that that's with your constituent, that that was going to happen at that pace, and that's the reason.
It's not going to be one of those big tank-looking things, it's going to be something that we can use.
I'm sorry?
It's not going to be one of those tank-looking things, it's just a military.
But it'll be protected.
It'll be practical, and it'll be protected, yes.
That extra armor.
In this area, you may be able to buy used.
Kind of over to the arsenal there. It may be from World War Two, but, you know.
All right, guys, thanks. All right, and then, Mary Beth, I know, last day, we kind of talked in comp plan and bringing up the, um, the list that kind of comes from that that you have that ties together with some of this, so they can kind of pull it up.
So, she takes it, now she waits until everybody talks about the mine, as you say, and she comes up here and asks.
She, she, she specifically asked you this time, right? I was just saying.
You did spend it wisely.
Yes.
Just like all that's in my district, thank you.
Um, before we jump into the comp plan, there's one project in Fund Thirty-Eight that, uh, is the planning, planning project, and that's the Wayfinding Phase One Sign Program. And the, um, construction drawings for that are almost finished. We've got one bracket detail that we're trying to get just right. Uh, the sign company is, um, thinking that we probably could have those signs installed by the end of August, so, um, we're excited about that, so. Uh, so with respect to the comp plan, uh, you've got up on the screen, and, and Councilmember you have a packet, uh, I've pulled out, uh, the transportation-related projects, because that's what you were talking about. So, up on the screen are the recommended transportation projects that came as a result of the transportation modeling that was done. So, you do a comprehensive plan, you're looking at what your future growth is, and then you run a model to look at that growth and the impact it has on your road network. And the, I'm going to just jump to the second page, uh, which is a graphic that shows level of service, that's what the letters are, A being optimal level of service, F being, um, not optimal level of service. And so, when we look at, uh, the project built out in twenty forty-five, um, the good news is, is that most of the roads are green. We made their functioning at an acceptable level of service, either A, B, or C. We've got some issues. But this graphic has the, um, the alphanumeric labeling, right? So, C one, S one, which corresponds to that first table. So, if you're looking at this later on, um, that's how this, this puzzle puts together. And there's, um, pretty good correlation with, I guess, some of what Michael presented earlier. I don't have that list, but there's some pretty good correlation there. So, for example, that first road is the connection through the Madison Branch subdivision, right? Uh, to serve the New Elementary School. The second item is looking at widening or improving Walter Hannah Highway. The third item is Royal Drive, we talked a little bit about that. And the fourth item is Henderson Lane, looking at providing another north-south route from, um, Highway Seventy-two down to Huntsville-Brownsville. The fifth item is finishing the Garner, Garner Avenue extension down to Madison Boulevard, uh, which helps not only the traffic circulation, but certainly supporting our downtown, providing alternative access to get into downtown. That would be punching Garner Avenue down to Madison Boulevard and installing a traffic signal there. Improvements to Slaughter Road, and then the last one on that list is Huntsville-Brownsville. So, and you'll see on the right-hand, um, column there that they've put a priority. And again, these are draft recommendations, this has not gone to our advisory committee yet. And so, our process with the general plan is to, um, provide the advisory committee with the entire general plan or comp plan. Um, they'll look through it, uh, make suggestions, then it's going to go out for public consumption and review, and then we'll bring it back to the advisory committee, then it'll go to the planning commission for adoption, and then ultimately to you for endorsement. Another component that's in your packet are recommendations on intersections. And, you know, the good news as a result of the traffic modeling is most of the roads have adequate capacity, but where we end up having breakdown is at our intersections. So, the city's been looking at roundabouts, looking at traffic signal improvements. And this is a list, again, in, uh, with a prioritization of different intersection improvements, whether it be a roundabout, whether it be fixing that alignment of Brownsville and Old Madison Pike, or installing a traffic signal. Councilmember Roblesky, you look like you want to comment.
I, I'm just chuckling to myself that the Walton-Brownsville, that's a priority of one, and the Walton-Goots one has priority, just, just chuckle there.
Right, so, um, and, and engineering has reviewed all of this, of course. The recommendations are, um, from the traffic consultant, the sub-consultant, to our main consultant is Skipper Consulting, who does a lot of traffic analysis. Again, this is draft, we've made some questions and comments to them, and I don't have some of those responses back. That prioritization can change, um, that was their take based upon their analysis.
Yeah, that's, uh, one ten down there, Walt Ryan and Galeski Roundabout? That's the first I've heard of a roundabout at Walt Ryan and Galeski.
Yeah, that, again, made, again, as, as Michael was saying too, when he was on the line, in some cases, roundabouts become not so feasible because of existing development and drainage and floodway. But that is what the consultant is recommending.
I, I'm just amazed, because it's the first I've heard.
Yeah, we, we, that just, that just comes out, we haven't ever called it.
Yeah, I think that that was actually in our transportation plan from twenty eighteen. So, one of the things that this consultant did is, um, they took the twenty eighteen transportation plan, which is fairly recent, which also a traffic model was run. And for that level of effort, Gary, at that time, the city engineer, had identified fifteen intersections, um, that were high-traffic intersections, and there was specific intersection analysis done for all of those, and then there were recommendations made. Uh, and so, some of these projects are from that twenty eighteen transportation plan.
Are we still looking at a roundabout? And this just popped into my head, at Victoria and Eastview, Eastview and Victoria, the top buildings.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
There's also a corresponding map for this that you can look at, at your leisure. And then, the last item here are just the Priority One, um, Greenway and Side Path projects. There are, um, probably another... There are, um, probably another thirty-five, priority two, priority three, greenway-side path projects. There are a tremendous number of them. I have not provided them to you because we, um, had a number of comments about some of them, and we're still waiting to hear back from the consultant. You will see that the greenway that you mentioned is not there. That's, I believe, a priority two project. And, um, in part because of the complexity, I think, of that because it's a small, um, level. Uh, but, you know, these are, I, I would say, in most part are not a surprise. There's Oakland Spring Branch trying to finish at Bradford Creek. We have the multi-use path that would be done along, um, Kaiser Boulevard, which the developer Bradford Station has to do. Looking at finishing out side paths on Hughes Road, um, finishing the side path that runs through Town Madison. You know, we've got part of that that developers constructed, but we need to get it all the way over the hill. You know, the second item, uh, on that list, it says Corey Road from Madison Boulevard to Inograph Way. The goal is to connect the side path, multi-use path that goes through Town Madison where it, it, uh, right now, we've got a path that goes to the roundabout at Inograph Way in line with Corey Road. And to get a path that runs effectively to Madison Boulevard, but it wouldn't go up Inograph, to Madison Boulevard, and then connect to where Garner Avenue is gonna come down and be able to have people bike from Town Madison all the way to the downtown. Uh, you may recall a couple of years ago, we had a consultant, um, do a study where they looked at different options of where that multi-use path could go. So, we've got that sitting, you know, as opportunity presents itself. Um, it, it'll be a little bit of a tricky project, but that's what that piece is. And the consultant in recommending this prioritization is looking at, um, in some cases, little connections, but these are more the bigger pieces that have a really meaningful impact in terms of connecting large areas, Toyota Field and, or Town Madison and downtown, for example. Again, there is a very long list of, um, little connections. And I think it was mentioned about how do you improve connections between subdivisions and neighborhoods and allowing kids to walk to school. And the consultant has a number of recommendations about that that we're trying to find tune. And then the last item is to talk about the schedule because we, our consultant is well fully behind. I got this, um, today, this afternoon. We've reviewed, there are ten chapters in this document. We've reviewed nine of the ten, which is pretty good. The tenth one we have yet to get, um, we'll be receiving that next week. And then there's one chapter that's being significantly reworked, and I'm expecting that to have be, um, turned in next week. Uh, we've provided, of the nine that we've already reviewed, we've provided lots of comments, and we reviewed a couple of chapters more than once. Some of them are in really, really good shape. Um, and a couple still need some, uh, tuning. Our anticipated schedule is to have the plan ready for advisory committee at the end of July and look at giving public engagement in September and having final adoption of the plan by the planning commission in November. As you all know, the planning commission is the body that approves the plan, but it does come to the city council for endorsement, and, uh, we are planning on that happening by the end of the year. I'd answer any questions.
Because will the city council have an opportunity to review it before the public comments and the public review?
I understand the question. Uh, we have in the scope of work for the consultant, an actual, an optional, uh, virtual work session with the city council. Um, and I would expect that we would do that. The scheduled calls for it to occur, I wanna say in September during public engagement, but it actually gets in October. And, um, but what I hear you saying is you'd wanna look at it before it goes out for public review.
Well, I mean, at least see the draft of it or whatever because what, I'm thinking the budget cycle. You know, our budget ends September thirtieth. So, if there's something significant in there, we may need to have something in the budget for that.
Okay.
Or at least have a contingency plan for that if it's approved by the planning commission. And if we don't see it until October, which is already done, you've got to wait till mid-year budget before we can get it in there. And that is, is one of my concerns. The other thing is, I don't want us to be blindsided in a public meeting.
Oh, we'd never do that, but.
Not that you, not that that would happen, but, you know.
I, I, I understand. So, we wanna, um, we'll certainly share the information with council. We also wanna respect the advisory committee's role, which is to represent the community. Um, you know, the board, the committee was created by the council and to let them do their job, which they have been doing all along in terms of guiding what the projections are. Um, they've reviewed the transportation model. They reviewed the projections. They're the ones who blessed all of what the plan has. Um, but certainly, we will engage council. Um, with respect to your concern about budget, um, the, uh, projects, the, the comp plan isn't, doesn't have any projects that are saying, if you don't do this within six months, you know, uh, you're, you're gonna have a problem. The transportation projects that you've been provided are a significant item. The plan, uh, also talks about the fact that, um, the fighter and police department, you know, need an additional station, um, to serve the west side. That's not new news. That's, um, uh, in the west side master plan already that another station would be needed over there. It's also in the west side master plan that Station Number Three needs to be relocated to the west. Those two items would carry forward into the comp plan. The comp plan is effectively going to, I'll say, replace the west side master plan, right? So, we looked through the west side master plan for those recommendations and, and checked in with the various departments. Does this recommendation still make sense? Do you still need to relocate Station Three? Once you've got the station in Town Madison, do you still need to station five? So, we've had these conversations. We've also engaged with the library to check in to see, given this future growth, do you think an additional library would be needed? And, um, surprisingly, the response was probably not. That they might be able to make do, but they would like to see some lockers installed, um, book lockers, or you can borrow. So, there could be opportunities down the road to look at that, but it's not a branding facility. Um, the actual implementation of that is a, a, a level of specificity that we wouldn't get into in the comp plan. So, the comp plan's gonna identify those kinds of things. I think in addition to the public safety and the, the roads, the other big item would be, of course, parks. And, um, are there any, uh, additional park amenities that would be recommended? I'm still waiting for that list of recommendations, and so I don't have that piece. Um, obviously, some of the, um, projects that we're gonna be looking at is, um, building out and developing the new twenty-three acres south of Huntsville-Brownsbury that we got, right, in Lumbaham County as part of the Madison Farms development. So, that will be a project. There may be additional, um, projects that Corey has in mind, right, that'll all come into that plan. But I'm not aware of any other, as I'm, I'm thinking through it. There's, there's nothing that I foresee coming forward that would impact the budget other than, for example, the transportation-related greenway projects. You know, the consultant may say, hey, this really needs to be priority one. And, you know, staff has a different take on it for right now, for whatever reason. And you may want to use the comp plan, right, to change that prioritization. So, that could be a benefit. But you, again, you've got the draft recommendations, which may be tweaked a little bit for transportation once we're finished with it. Uh, but I don't foresee, um, you having a, a, a conflict, I'll say, with the timing of this and the timing of your budget adoption.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Um, I was gonna ask, would we be able to have on the agenda for Monday, hearing aid tax pre-discuss?
Uh, please. That's on the.
Oh, okay. So, we're, I, I'm sorry.
No discussion about that. Um, and I guess we'll just go ahead and forward. And Mr. Corr, if you want to introduce the topic.
Uh, just to give everyone a little background, the, uh, state legislature, in fact, in May, had passed an exemption to their sales and use tax, uh, whereby they exempted the gross proceeds from the sale and the sale and sales of hearing instruments, including hearing aids for sales and use tax. Uh, as the state defines a hearing instrument, define that as any wearable instrument or device designed or offered for the purpose of aiding or compensating for impaired human hearing. So, this is effective, uh, in the state October first, and it goes for five years and then it sunsets. Uh, basically, all this, all of these cities, uh, they have the option at, to, not necessarily opt-in, we can do the same as them. So, what I did was I prepared an ordinance that would begin, uh, at the same time, uh, does not have a sunset provision in it. Uh, but it's very, very simple. Basically, all we do is just say that this is an additional exemption to our sales and use tax, and then we'd be able to move forward. So, you have the option, of course, to move that day accordingly. Uh, if you wanted to enact it, put a sunset provision in, uh, but, uh, that's what I gave us as far as the starting.
Okay. Um, I've looked at the draft, and I was wondering, I thought I saw that you had it effective September one?
I put September, uh, one, but October one's one in the states.
Right, so I was wondering.
If I wanted to put it in the same day.
Would it make sense for us to go into effect at the same time?
Yes. It would. And another thing that we would have to do is we can go through our normal, uh, passing of the ordinance. And then I think that, uh, just practically speaking, we would reach out to some of the local distributors of hearings, let them know that it had been enacted and when the effective date would be.
And what would be the time, the, the timeframe in terms of what needs to happen next?
Uh, if you, uh, gave me the, the go-ahead, I could put this on, on July eighth for a first reading. We could, um, enact it, uh, the next July meeting. And I think once we publish, I think we could very easily get it ready to be effective, uh, October first.
Okay. Well, I'll get up for any comments, questions.
We're gonna hear what, what that generates, year to now, or?
No, I didn't generate.
Go over and plan that for you, but that may have.
Before it would come out?
No, I'm saying, you can say, let's cut it. Down all the year, I mean, down all the year, and I'm, 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 I'm reading.
Be off.
And right now, currently, there's three, three limitations.
Well, in, in course, you know, that if we have other folks come in, you know, during the course, it could be more, I guess, but, uh, that, that would be the starting point. See, any sales within the city would be included in some.
So, I'll get you guys some idea of what it, numbers, not fairly, then make it for the last.
And we're tentatively looking at July eight for that meeting to do for sure, to be able to turn it out. Okay. And I know this, this impacts a senior community, the, um, son of fixed income. There are lots of very good reasons to do this. I recently took my mother into look at hearing aids, and she wants me to share that. But we were looking at it, and they're very expensive. They're not owned or by insurance. So, it's something that a lot of us were interested in and looking at, and it's important.
Maude and I are looking for the buy-two-get-two-free grounds for our house. Yeah. I, I think this will benefit a huge number of people and would be a very positive statement for Madison to support that community. And as the gentleman mentioned, there will be people maybe coming into the community to purchase the hearing aids, and they may stay and have lunch. Appreciate you very much, Steve.
And it's my understanding that if you didn't want to move forward on that, we, looks like it would be the first situation to be able to jump on this and make it, uh, exempted as well from sales and use tax.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, just looking ahead on our schedule, given what Mary Beth has given us, and I don't know what, in terms of the budget, we even need to have a work session in July? Should we wait till August?
So, I don't really answer that. One thing I was gonna add, you know, so much of what we did tonight is all the current CIB projects, the possibility of projects that are coming out, what we then will do from the mayor's office. I'm gonna say thanks to Steve for all he's come to help us secure a lot of this information. But then obviously, what we use work with Roger. The other component of that was, was in Megan's case, talking about, uh, the Evergreen Study, the, the, the compensation plan that we, we've looked at. Uh, I think Megan's in a position where tomorrow, she's gonna be sitting in the council, the, the Rush Rice Report, kind of financially, this is what it kinda looks like. Does it help her? Obviously, it helps petition and a lot of those things. But where does it fit in financially? Uh, and then Megan and Roger and I will be looking to see how we fit this in, either within one year or two years, into our budget, along with what we have. So, Megan, we sent that information tomorrow. It is another component where, as council, you guys will have decisions on where's the best family. And we know we owe you, or the third party, it's the first shot at it. And we're gonna get as quickly as we can to have as much discussion as we can go forward.
So, on that particular subject, are we going to get something about total compensation, um, as well? Or are we just gonna base it solely on salaries alone?
Well, I, I think it's, it's got, you know, total, it's got total, right?
Yes. The analysis, how the total compensation analysis as well as the base salary analysis. Okay. So, besides the briefing that she's gonna send out, is there gonna be a time for us to have a discussion?
Oh, yeah. When you say, uh.
Well, it's a council. I thought it was gonna be brought up tonight, especially because it's part of the budget.
Yes.
So, I'm surprised it wasn't. So, why is it gonna be time for us to see it and discuss as a group?
So, that's, so now, we're hearing, that's why they need to make discussions. We may wanna have a discussion in, um, next month.
Do you think July before?
Yeah, yeah, yes. You may. I mean, I'll be here, I'll be uptown, if that, you know, we can still have. You can leave that. We can get the consultant. We can, whatever you guys have determined is needed to have an understanding of what the total cost might look at. Again, we're trying to figure out how to work it in. We're FY twenty-five. We just institute this rather than that, our normal process that we do with a three percent step, step, a possible call. You can insert this in and possibly get it done immediately. So, there's. We'll have that discussion. Um, but part of what I'm sure you do first is get the financial side, and then yes, we can hear that.
Okay. I don't think it's a one percent.
If we're looking for the Wednesday between the council meetings, that would put us at July seventeen. Uh, I don't know if everything's gonna be ready by then, but that would be the normal Wednesday. Is that too soon?
Would you be ready for that, Megan, if we get it done? I think so. Yes. And Mayor and Roger and I will meet on Friday, and we can give you a final answer then. But yes, I'm, I will be ready to have a discussion on it then.
Okay. Okay. So, if it's set back to seventeen, then what?
Seventeen, I would have.
Seventeen would be the normal.
Yeah.
I think we'll be ready to have a discussion on that.
Yeah, I'm trying to be out of time on the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
Okay. So, so like the seventeen.
So, that'd be a good discussion. By that time, we might have an understanding of what it looks like, who we put. Because Roger and I, we were talking about that going to our department heads, you know, uh, on the front end. They typically said, okay, guys, assume a step increase and, you know, right now be out with a call again. And then a lot of times, Roger and team will just plug in one percent, two percent, three percent, and look at. In this case, we may simply look to plug in the study to see what that looks like based on where salary has been and salary is now. And one thing that they talk about is our salary never hits what we have in there because we never have all the positions filled. So, we always have that. And so, in some instances, we're not even gonna get, when we add what we're adding, we're not even gonna get over where we are just because of that. But there is a big impact to it, and we're ready to, for the team, that's amazing decisions.
I also think we're in a position that I'm glad we're in July because, you know, it's gonna come to finance committee, and all of these are sitting around, we may do it quickly. There, we're, we're at a point now, you know, we're, we're in a different stage in our budgets now than we were, you know, some years ago when we had all our money in, all this money from Annis. It's a lot different. So, now we're back to the days of, you know, we have to make some decisions. We have to pass the trade-offs. I, you know, I know with, we want all three of our projects, okay, which three projects are you gonna give up across the whole? You know, would you rather have your street instead of giving funds to employees? Would you rather do this instead of that? That, that's where we're coming back to. We're coming back to earth again, and, you know, that's, that's gonna be reality for a really long time. And I think we need to set up the next group, whether it be us or someone else. And I think we need to set up the next group, whether it be us or someone else, for, you know.
The other part of that, too, is, and you can see it with the secrets of the seal, you know, we're working with schools when it comes to projects that support infrastructure. So those discussions are continuing with them right now. It is, you know, you're trying to make sure all entities are having discussions, again, mass utility, some of the reasons we do certain projects is to coordinate with them, only try to do it once. So when you go to neighborhood paving, go talk to neighborhood paving, exactly what we do, is you have, if they have projects that are building, or they're messing up the sewers, get that done, then a great time to come in and do the road. So all those things coming in by seventeen, I think we'll be able to give you guys some good information. Megan, could you be ready?
I think it's important to point out that, you know, as a city, we have not had a new revenue stream, basically, since we started the school system. We passed, we passed two property taxes for our schools, we added a half cent, sales tax for our schools, which needed to be done, I'm not trying to take anything away from the schools, but we're still working on that basic, you know, tax structure from, from back twenty-something years ago. Yes, we've grown, our, our revenues have grown, but our needs have grown, too. So we're going to have some more decisions that we have to make, just because, you know, of that fact. So as we're looking at this, I think we're going to, like Teddy said, it's going to be a different kind of a budget than what we've had in the past several years.
My other question, as far as that goes, did the comprehensive plan show any economic development that we should be looking at? Is that part of their discussion, or not? Things that we can do to bring in different businesses that would improve our, our tax base?
Well, the comp plan doesn't look at programs like that, per se, that kind of level of specificity. But you'll recall, there is an economic fiscal analysis component of this comprehensive plan, and they were a subconsultant to our, our prime. And so they have conducted a fiscal analysis of the twenty forty-five bailout scenario, if you will, to see whether or not that would be fiscally positive for the city, and the result was that it was fiscally positive. And so, and there's a, a chapter on that. But that type of, I guess, those kinds of recommendations, if you will, or something more, that would be out of a, a strategy document, rather than a, a comprehensive plan, which is more general in nature.
Okay. Did, I thought it was just like what we should do in different areas, this may be a better place to know this.
So in the city's existing growth plan, there are what are called key development areas, you've probably heard that phrase in before, there's six of them, right? Town Madison area is a key development area, Highway seventy-two. And so what we've done as part of this analysis is, we've kind of looked at those key development areas, some of them don't need to be key development areas anymore, because they've kind of fulfilled their purp, purpose. And in some cases, the boundaries of those areas have changed, and so the consultant has recommended kind of rebranding those and changing them a little bit, and that is part of the analysis that will be in chapter six of the document, talking about specific areas where we want to target investment, what that might look like. But it's not going to be of, of the level of specificity of saying, get a trailer jobs, or, you know, that type of thing.
Not that type of thing. But which type of industry should we be looking at? You know, like industrial development, where should they be looking at to maybe expand? Because I think all of us, pretty much, when we were campaigning, it was like, yeah, we need to increase our economic, you know, development, so we can have more money.
Sure. Yeah, which we've been doing, but I think some of that will be in the document. On the industrial side, the city did do an industrial area plan back in twenty eighteen-ish, which has some specific recommendations on there. So, you know, planning is a layer cake, and, you know, the foundational layer is the comp plan, which sets forth the, the broad goals, and then you add a layer, which is usually more implementation kinds of plans, and then you add a layer, which is, you know, funding, and, and so we're, we're trying to set the foundation, right, for the next twenty-some-odd years, or at the beginning of the baking process.
Okay. And wait for the frosting.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to adjourn?
I just have one thing, I just wanted to ask if everyone would prayerfully consider the resolution brought to us on Monday night, you may not have had time to think about it, but it's something I support, and it was a resolution against censorship and book banning, and just want to bring that forward, that maybe that's something we can look at in the next couple of meetings, get actual support of, of the resolution suggested, and you weren't here Monday, so we don't have a copy of it, so if we can get you a copy of it.
I have no idea what it is.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Roger.
Good read?
Yeah. Tough people, all right, definitely. Why is this all?[1755.12]